Two. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Mr. Clerk, do we have a quorum present?
We have one, two, three, four, five present, and Mr. Bodie and Jason Inglebrook are absent.
All right.
So we do have a quorum.
We do have a quorum.
Oh, you got to appoint Jerry as.
Oh, I'd like to appoint Mr. Robishaw as our acting clerk tonight. He seems to have accepted.
Yeah, I'm putting my initials on this.
All right, that's good enough for me. All right, then we rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands in our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. I beg the indulgence of our board, and our administration, and our spectators, as this is my first full meeting as acting chair. I believe our first step is to approve the agenda. Any comments, questions?
I'd like to add an item. I talked to Todd about the, I don't know what number it would go under, but about the days off of school.
You could put it under Roman numeral 10, under other bands, part C.
Roman numeral 10, C.
C, okay.
Days, are miss, are snow days, is that?
Snow days.
Snow days.
Makeup days.
There's makeup.
And you'll need a second to that.
Do I have a second for that addition to our agenda?
Just a clarification, is that for discussion purposes only?
Um, action, action item. Because I think the absentees are mine already.
All right. I believe we're still awaiting a possible second. If I'm not correct. Oh, well, we're not hearing a second.
Well, I have a second motion just for discussion. I'm motion, I guess we can progress to the point and have a discussion regarding the motion, the motion needed.
No, yes, for discussion.
I believe we need to have a vote, if I'm.
We have, you can have discussion now.
You can discuss.
Oh, we can discuss it now. All right, thank you.
Yep.
I guess I would suggest, even though I voted second to the motion, that that is just information only, and that we really don't, can't vote on the date tonight, that we would leave that decision up to the superintendent and the staff to make at a future date.
If I can just follow up to that, I believe that there's been extensive discussion with the staff and the superintendent regarding more of those dates to be made up, or should there be any made up. So I'm not sure what our role would be on that. The calendar's been approved by us sometime ago, so unless I'm mistaken.
It is my understanding that we have a motion to discuss possible makeup days during this school year. And Mr. Olson, who made the motion, was asking for an action by the board.
Because we approved their calendar, or changes. This would be a change to the calendar, so I'm doing within the procedure.
I do not question that. However, what I am asking for assistance on is that our second seems to be a qualified second, in that it was to open it for discussion. So I'm not sure.
I think we could end discussion and vote on the motion that we currently stand, probably.
Okay, and then we could have another mo, if the desire, the outcome was not as anyone desired, we could have a second motion to address that. All right, any other comments?
State the motion again. You haven't got to be on the agenda yet.
You can work right away.
Yeah, I'm making him sweat.
Kathy, can you?
Do you want to state your motion? Mr. Olson made a motion to have an action item on snow day makeups. But the second was by Yvette Martholler for discussion of snow day makeups.
Is that amendment?
I think you have to just say second.
Second, just second.
Oh, second, oh, okay.
All right. So, and is this a roll call vote?
It doesn't have to be. It's up to you.
All right. The motion being that we add an action item regarding snow day makeup to our agenda for this evening. It is, the motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Aye.
Aye.
Now you have to roll call.
Now we do a roll call.
Okay, Ms. Davis?
No.
Yvette Martholler?
No.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
I vote no. Mr. Casper?
No.
The motion fails, four to one.
I would make a motion to add discussion or information items to the budget, considering makeup days. And we could add it in the same area, I guess, other items of information under the superintendent's report. I don't know if I have to make a motion to do that, but.
Either way.
All right, so we have a motion to add an item to discuss makeup days.
Are we, I'm sorry, we could add it under 10C, so we can have a formal information.
So like 10C, one?
10C, one.
Okay. There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
I believe we can have discussion at this point. Any comments?
Clarification of the motion.
I would like to add, under 10C, a discussion of makeup days, snow makeup days by the superintendent, information only, no action required.
In the purpose, just so we know where we stand.
What options are perhaps being discussed, and how many days we're looking at as possible makeup days.
All right, I believe we have a motion and a second. And if past experience is any guide, we can take a vote. All those in favor of the motion as stated, say aye. Aye. All those opposed?
No.
Roll call.
Deb Davis?
Aye.
Yvette Martholler?
Aye.
Mr. Olson?
No.
I'll vote aye. Mr. Casper?
Aye.
Motion passes, four to one.
All right, so we will add item 10C to our agenda, a discussion of days to be made up this school year, for information purposes.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
With, with the amendment?
As amended.
As amended?
Yep.
Second.
Okay, discussion? All those in favor of the motion to accept the agenda as amended, please say aye. Aye. Opposed?
No.
Roll call, I believe.
Okay, Deb Davis?
Aye.
Yvette Martholler?
Aye.
Mr. Olson?
No.
I'll vote aye. Mr. Casper?
Aye.
Motion passes to approve the agenda as amended, four to one.
Brings us to item three on the agenda, recognitions and awards, and my information is that there are none to be acknowledged at this point. So we will move on to item four, community comment. Three minutes per speaker, fifteen minutes per topic. Is there anyone who would like to address the board on any issue? I believe the stampede is over, so we'll move on. Item five, the consent agenda, consisting of minutes from our last meeting, employment decisions, additional assignments, and authorization of payments, transfers, and investment activity. I believe any member of the board can request any of these items, or some part of this, to be considered separately. Is there anyone who would make that request? Hearing none, except the motion to, or look for a motion to adopt the consent agenda. Some more? All right, all those in favor of the motion to accept the consent agenda, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Appears to have passed unanimously. Time out. I don't, I do not know.
Can you just hold on a second? Is that under a limit?
C.
Oh, yep.
The chair requests clarification of what issue we are.
Yeah, I apologize, over the long weekend. We had talked about this with the board chair, but there is an item under the consent agenda, item C, under Roman numeral five, and we've already approved the consent agenda, so how you want to go back and do that through Robert's rules, that would be a suggestion I would have you take out, simply because this person's requesting additional leave that we have not been extended.
Ah, yes.
Sorry, I really put you the task today, Tom.
I'll be able to handle this after tomorrow.
Sure.
All right. I'm looking at the extended leave of absence for a staff member.
Right.
Requesting a three to five-year extended leave of absence after July 1st.
Yeah, you'd need a motion or a request to pull that out of the consent agenda. From one of the board.
Request would be pulled out.
You have to reconsider the motion made to approve the consent agenda.
Right.
And then bring that back on the table.
Right.
And so who made the motion? I think I did.
You did.
I did, and I'll, I'll make a motion to reconsider the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of reconsidering the consent agenda to deal with the leave, extended leave of absence, please say aye. Aye. All opposed? All right, so that.
I apologize for that.
No, no apology required. At least to me. All right, that brings us back to approving the consent agenda, with further information indicates that we need to consider separately the motion. Do I, am I allowed to say the name at this point, or is that?
How would you say, if you pull out item five C, and consider the extended leave of absence for this individual?
All right. So I believe I would accept the motion to approve the consent agenda with the pulling out of item five C, additional assignments and others.
Yep.
Okay, I'm looking for a motion.
Some more?
Second?
Second.
All those in favor of the motion to approve this consent agenda with the exception of item five C, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. All right. Consent agenda approved with the exception of five C. All right. Mr. Sesker, could you summarize this situation for us and make clear to the chair the decision that we are facing?
Yeah, this is a person that's asking, they've already been, you know what, I'm going to even ask Nicole to come up for questions, because she may have better knowledge than I do, just to fill in the blanks. But this is a person that's asking for another leave, an extended leave of absence, and they have been teaching in another school right now, and they are asking to extend that leave and not come back as a result of the current leave that's been, that's expired right now. So this individual, rather than coming back to comparable public schools, would like to extend their leave and teach where they are currently. And it's our opinion that we are being faced with folks that are coming back into our school system, and this year it's been okay, because we have some open spots at the elementary, although we're not quite there yet, we have to figure out what the budget's going to be. But the people coming back off the leaves are, they can potentially bump a staff that has been hired. So our issue is that we would like to have the board consider not, not accepting this extended leave of absence, and then having that person make a decision of whether or not they're going to come back to the school this year, or continue on with their current position. And certainly ask Nicole questions.
Will this person bump somebody if this person comes back?
At this point in time, I do not believe so, because with, with this next coming up school year, eleven passing, the intention was to add back elementary classroom teachers, and so as long as our enrollment, they stay or move forward with that plan, then this individual will not be placed in another classroom position.
And how many, how many teachers are coming back as a result of leave right now, that we are required to place in the classroom? And this would be up for?
Yes.
These other individuals are coming back from a leave of absence as well?
Right.
So there is a position available. If this person doesn't come back, we'd hire a new teacher, who may very well have some Spanish background.
Is there any past practice that you're aware of that you could tell us about? Or past situations of similar nature?
Sure. Really, it's on both ways. We have had, two years ago, where we have been fairly leaning towards approving these, these absences beyond what the statutory, what the state law says we have to do. The past few years, we've really tried to shy away from doing that, and just sticking with what the law says, and not going over it.
Unless there's unusual circumstances that we didn't look at.
Would I be correct in understanding that perhaps some of that flexibility that might have been exercised in the past was due to budget cuts and positions being eliminated, and if someone were already on leave, that would not require an additional? Is there any connection between that?
I don't know of any connection to that, but that was, these leaves were before my time, so I'm not sure if you have that history or not, Nicole.
I would say probably not. I mean, when, in the past, when we have been looking at budget reductions, and in ULAs, it, it might be a little easier to make that decision to allow individuals to leave, rather than placing another staff on an acceptable leave, or not doing that. But we're not really, we're in a really different situation this year.
Right, no, I understand that it's different now.
Mr. Chair, if this person were to be granted the leave, they would retain their place on the seniority list for the next three to five years, is that correct? They would not lose their seniority in our district.
At this point, this individual has taken a five-year leave.
Right.
So during the past five years, she has continued to accrue seniority. Now, at this point in time, she is frozen where she was at effective this year. But she won't lose it, but she won't move forward.
We won't gain any more.
And if there are positions that are open, just to put this out there too, we are going to open the positions, and this person is certainly welcome to apply for a position in the future as well. If they wanted to take more leave and work with that particular school, they can always come back and apply later.
Mr. Chair, can I make a couple of comments?
Please do.
Really struggling with this, because this is just a dynamic individual. Has a tremendous impact on students in our district, and has for years. And I just respect this individual greatly, as to what they can do in our schools, and our kids would be the benefactor having this individual come back. And yet, to afford this person the opportunity to extend their involvement in this other organization, I guess I'm torn as to where we would go with that, so. It's just a very difficult decision. Mr. Sesker, I'm sorry, Tom.
No, no, I'm, I know this individual as well, and I second everything that you've said about the quality of her teaching and the benefit to our students. I am, I'm rereading her letter to the superintendent, and when I read it earlier, these words struck me, and they strike me again. She's asking us to consider what is in the best interest of our district. And it is certainly in our interest to support our staff, but it is our primary interest to support our students. So I also feel torn in terms of trying to be supportive of a, of a long-term, longtime staff member, who is looking to do work that they consider valuable, but I'm also looking at, you know, putting that person to work with our students here in this district, and, okay, well, that's all I have to say.
So. One question to Mr. Sesker, have you had a conversation with this person?
I have not talked to this person. I think Nicole has had a conversation with this person.
And her letter pretty well reflects where she's coming from.
Well, is this just one, this is just one of the leaves of absence that were, would fall under item C? Am I correct? So can we, I'm, I'm, I'm flying by the seat of my pants here, so can we move to accept all other assignments and changes, and then at that point take up this individual case that you have brought?
You've already done the consent agenda.
Yes.
Right, so you're okay with that. So the only thing you're considering right now is this one, right?
We have a motion.
Well, I understand, I may be wrong, but I understood that we pulled off item C, which was all those assignments, and.
That was, yep.
Can we have a second?
Well, that's all of us. Well, all of five C, I'm sorry, yes.
So the chair, for reasons inexplicable, believes that it might be appropriate to entertain a motion to approve all the additional assignments and other items under five C, with the exception of this individual requesting an additional three to five-year leave.
Sure, you can do that, yep.
Okay. So I'll ask for a motion to accept all other items under that five C part of our agenda with that one exception.
Some more?
Second.
Motion and a second? All, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve all other additional assignments, other than the one request for an additional five-year leave, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. All right, that passes. All right, then I guess I, we would be in the position of entertaining a motion regarding that one individual leave, would be my.
Yep, just so you know, it's our recommendation, both Nicole and our recommendation, is not to extend the leave.
Mm-hmm. All right. So I would entertain a motion regarding this additional leave, with the understanding that a recommendation has been made by the administration not to approve that leave. Is there a motion?
Some more?
Is there a second?
Do not approve.
To not approve. Okay?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, then all those in favor of not approving the additional five-year leave under question?
Three years.
Three, three years, excuse me. All those in favor of not, denying the request to, for an additional three-year leave, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed? I believe the motion passes. All right. I believe we are now to item six on the agenda, curriculum. Do we have, we have a speaker?
Actually, our meeting is, next meeting, meeting is March 3rd. Just to remind everybody, on March 3rd, we're going to look at that, look at some of our add-backs, and the job description that go with that. But I do have an update on technology. Just wanted to let you know that our tech committee has been working hard on our digital tech plan, to hope us to be able to bring that to the March Ford meeting for you to, or the March Ford work session for you to be able to review. Wanted to also let you know that through federal funds, through our title funds, our sixty ELL iPads and twenty-seven Title I iPads have arrived. Those are funds that, our Title I funds and our Title III funds have purchased. And the other thing that's happening with technology is we are currently meeting with the middle school and the high school to have discussions on whether or not we want to go totally with iPads, or add Chromebooks in the middle and high schools. And we've already talked with the middle school, and they're surveying them certainly. And Wednesday, we'll be there to have a conversation with our high school to see where our staff actually should have. And that's pretty much our update on technology. Any questions?
Who makes Chromebooks?
Like Google Chrome, or Google does. I think the draw to them, for many of our staff members, is that there's, you know, the keyboard piece and the, and the online component. It's very important, if you didn't know that, so it's kind of a, kind of a draw. We, we did tell our staff, basically, we did let our staff know that six, twelve will have to make a final decision, and it will be a six, twelve decision. It can't be, you know, middle school does this, and high school does that. We want to keep on a line, and, and that's what we'll use with our students when we make their choice in the future.
We're moving.
We are moving.
All right. According to my information, item seven, there was no policy meeting since our last session, so that'll bring us to item eight, finance committee. So do we have a report from the finance committee? We have three action items, I see.
I was not there, so.
Well, I was there, I don't know if you want to take them one by one, is that simpler, since we have to take action on them, do them one by one?
Well, that would make some sense to me.
Well, the website housing, hosting agreement is to develop our new website, and Rhea did a great presentation on the provider that, in our board book. She had talked with other districts that use this provider, and they were very happy with the web design, and there's lots of new exciting elements here, that I think the staff and the administrative team's very excited about. We could certainly have her speak to it, if you guys want to hear more details.
Well, in, in my conversation with Mr. Sesker earlier, one of the advantages seemingly of this Sharp School is their ability and willingness to work with individual teachers. So I think that aspect of, of looking at changes in instructional delivery or curriculum process would be supported by, by adding this.
Yeah, there are a lot of, a lot of features, and as that said, Rhea can probably speak more specifically to them, if you have questions about it, but there are a lot of. more specifically to them if you have questions about it, but there are a lot of nice features to this web design.
Would anyone ask Maria to, have any questions for Maria? We had rather extensive papers in our, in our packet this week, but, Mr. Olson?
Yeah, that's coming up later to vote on it anyway, so if we have questions, the Sharp School.
Yeah, that's where we're at.
No, no, we're just discussing the minutes.
Oh, I, okay, you're, all right. I sit corrected. All right, so.
Well, I think the minutes basically reflect that the three items are going to take action.
Okay.
So I think they're a good representation to find out.
All right. If there are no further questions about the minutes, then we'll move on to item B1 and that is an action on approving the website hosting agreement with Sharp School.
I would make a motion to approve the website hosting agreement with Sharp School.
Okay, we have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion?
How long is this going to take to do this?
You want to say that to the mic, because people are going to wonder about it.
I have the design work started at the end of March and then hopefully have it up and running by July 4th.
And for, the length of this agreement is?
With a three-year contract.
Okay, three years. Further questions, comments?
Where are they based at?
Where are they based at?
Yeah.
I'm not sure, I have to check.
Oh.
We have a lot of space in Minnesota.
Oh, okay.
We'll be free to ask them.
All right. Further questions for Maria? All right, I'll entertain a motion, or did we already have the motion?
Yes, yes.
We had the motion, all right. All those in favor of approving the website hosting agreement with Sharp School, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
The second item is very exciting. A teacher, our current teacher Steve Ulrich, is that, he presented robotics programs for the finance, for the finance committee, committee to consider. He has experienced his previous teaching position in Prior Lake, is that right, or Lakeville?
He was coaching in Prior Lake, but I don't know if he's teaching in-
He was a coach for the robotics program in Prior Lake. So he has some good experience, I think, for our school district and has, I think, a pretty good plan if you can look at the minutes from the finance committee. I think it would be a great opportunity for our students going forward. Really, it's about getting mentors on board and we can grow at that rate as we have mentors to work with the kids. I would strongly support approving it.
All right. I noted that we have a, quite a detailed description of program expenses and so on in our packet. And, Mr. Suesker, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe I asked you about participation and you made an estimate of somewhere between twenty and forty, am I accurate?
Yep, I'd say, yeah, if we get thirty, forty kids out, that would be terrific. And there's some interest there. There'd be a JV team and a varsity team.
Okay, and there are competitions available to our kids for that, in that area now, I believe.
If you've ever been to the state fair and you've seen the robotics competition up there, that's kind of the idea.
Okay. All right, sounds exciting.
Were you involved in this, Ken Falls?
No, they did more of the Lego-type robotics in the upper elementary grades, but they did some, something similar, not to this degree. This is much higher level.
It's going to be interesting to see what kind of projects they come up with. All right. Further discussion or questions?
I would, I guess I would move that we approve the addition of robotics extracurricular program.
Okay, we have a motion to approve robotics.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And item eight C, we have a request for an additional special ed paraprofessional. And if I recall our discussion, Todd, that was due to some IEP requirements of a student who has come to our district.
That's correct.
And Cheryl concerned and speaks to this, but my understanding was there was a job coach performing this job. And this, this part of the school year, till this point, the job coach had to go into the community working with students, so that's why we're looking at a request at this time for this.
Okay. All right. Further questions for the administration, or anyone?
I'll make a motion that we approve the special education paraprofessional.
Okay, we have a motion for the special ed paraprofessional.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right, we are now at eight C budget and we have an enrollment report and that was in our packet. Do we, anyone need further clarification or information? Nothing, no drastic changes or differences from previous months, as I noted. Okay, that would seem to be the case. All right, financial report, also in our packet. Pretty standard entries and nothing unusual that we should take note of, Colleen, all right. And that brings us to eight C three, considering the approval of gifts and donations. And for those of you using the computerized form, that page is number thirty-five of forty-five in our packet and it consists, quite a, quite a list. So let me say in advance that the board is very grateful for all those who have found the means and the ways to make contributions to our programming for students and we are grateful for each and every one. I will go through the list and then we will be sending thank you letters. Number one was from the Health Finders Eat Talk Connect Challenge and we received five hundred dollars for the family outreach event at Roosevelt. Number two, Friends of the Buckham Library have donated a hundred and twenty-five dollars to our stops program. The Friends of Education has donated three hundred and four dollars and four cents for general operating expenses. An anonymous parent has made a ten dollar donation for the McKinley Gymboree. Carlton College made a donation of six thousand five hundred dollars for the CAST program, College Ambitions Start Today. Could I pause here for a moment and ask you to make a comment about that program since it may be-
If you want to make a comment.
New to some of our viewers and-
Good evening. So the CAST program is our College Ambitions Start Today program. It is a ninth through twelfth grade program, after school, meets on Mondays, and it is about forty students attend. We've had great success in having ninth and tenth graders where they focus on more college readiness skills, developing those skills, and then eleventh and twelfth graders are looking at financial aid resources and we're bringing them through that process, making them, making them, having them fill out college applications, making sure they're, they're getting to college once they graduate. That, some of that seems to happen sometimes where some students graduate and they, they're signed up for college, but they end up not going. So, so we're kind of there the whole way through that whole process. It's a great program.
Sounds excellent, thank you very much. Continuing with our gifts and donations, item six, the Wells Fargo Foundation Educational Matching Gift Program has donated sixty-five dollars from their employee gift program. And number seven, Project Able, of which we've discussed on a number of occasions, received a series of donations to, for their bingo prizes. They include Lion's Meats, Family Video, Jimmy John's, Little Caesar's, A&amp;W Restaurant, Arby's, Taco John's, Pizza Hut, Boston's, and The Depot Bar and Grill. So again, on behalf of the board, I'd like to thank all those parties for their donations to our various programs.
That's an action item.
I'm sorry?
That's an action item.
Oh, yes, we must accept this. So I'm looking for a motion to accept all these wonderful gifts.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of, of accepting these gifts, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. We're smarter than we look. Speaking for myself. All right. We have a report on the school district hiring process for fiscal year 2014 to 2015.
Yeah, we talked a little bit about this at the finance committee and curriculum and I just wanted to review the process with the board again just to make sure that you understand how we're doing this. We have about twenty-one staff that we're going to be hiring through this spring for next fall, so that's terrific. And we've got a timeline established for each of the hires and basically what we're doing is we're saying that the hire will be, for the first instance, our media specialist will be hired by March 30th. So we back up thirty days, so we start the whole process in, in February. So we get the posting out, we'll go through the curriculum committee and we'll go through the finance committee. Between there, we'll have interviews and then at the March Board meeting, the plan is to hire. And so for each of the different hires that we're doing for next fall, that's going to be the process so everybody sees everything going through. And I just wanted to review that with the board today so they understand what's happening.
Sounds good. Any further questions? All right, then next item, item nine, other committee reports. Our insurance committee.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, I should have asked, does that timeline include the middle school principal hiring?
That one does not. Our middle school timeline is, this, this is just with the levy piece of it. Yeah, help me out, Nicole, I can't remember what we said for our timeline.
The middle school principal position closes on the 28th of February. We have it, it's eventually closing the 28th or opening October. So we'll reveal the applicant from the 28th and then decide when we're ready to place it.
And then I think too, the intent would be to bring a recommendation to the school board at the March Board meeting, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
All right. Insurance committee, do we have a report this evening?
Yeah, it's not much to it. I have to talk to Colleen, what was the insurance increase? Was it ten point five or ten point two? Was that before the cooperative discount? Yeah, what's, what was the projected increase?
Ten point three.
Okay, and was that before the cooperative? So it could go down to, what?
Twelve.
Oh, okay.
Not a huge jump.
So, so it could have at least a ten percent increase. Right, okay. That's it pretty much.
All right.
Can you fill, is there anything else that you want to fill in, Colleen? For the insurance?
Will we have accurate information as we begin our, our budgeting process for the coming school year?
First of April.
First of April, okay. All right, if there's no other items there, do we have a wellness committee report? Yes, we do.
Well, the bad news is we had to cancel the Fairville Middle School Wellness Fair due to the very poor conditions in what, no, it's not your fault at all. So we're, we're looking to reschedule, so we'll get you that date if that happens. And then we just wanted to talk a little bit about the employee wellness incentive program that we launched. And I don't know, is that, I don't want to, okay, I'll talk about it. It's a wellness plan where employees will have an incentive of twenty dollars to either join a race or, so be in a five pay or a ten pay, gym registration, fitness equipment, wellness type course, kind of anything that is wellness and health promoting. So they will have that ability to get a twenty dollar incentive towards something in that menu of items. That's, that's it.
All right, further questions? Seeing, hearing none. Community education report.
Great. The good news, AVE, Adult Basic Education, just was selected to be a reading companion site by IBM. And this is something our workforce partner has brought to us. It's a web-based literacy grant initiative. It's about a ten thousand dollar software and it is a voice recognition software, so it helps adults not only improve reading skills, but it improves their pronunciation. Very good opportunity. We didn't apply, we didn't even know we were in the running. So it was really good news that, that we were selected. The other piece is Twenty First Century is programming, that's after school, that community has provided for the last five years. That grant will be running out as of August 2014. We have another opportunity to apply, so we will be applying. The grant amount last year, or the last five years has been two hundred and ten thousand a year, so it's been quite a bit. And we've been able to do a lot of programming, elementary through twelfth grade. We, we only hope to maintain and expand that programming into a little bit more of the high school and middle school activities. We haven't had solid, real solid programming there, so we're going to expand that. And we have lots of partners up the table. We've been talking to community members kind of nonstop about that proposal. We're really hoping to, to get that proposal selected. The timeline for this, it's due on March 10th, so I'll be bringing it to, since it's a really big iterative process and we'll be writing until the last second and driving it up to the Department of Education. I'll be talking about it at the March finance, so I hope to have some sort of draft budget and then move it into the March Board for your approval. I'll have to have a signature before that, but if you have any questions along the process, I'm happy to answer them.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Bringing us to item 10, other matters, 10A. We have our school board retreat scheduled for a week from today at 5:30 PM at the district office. And our plan there is to review the district mission, vision, and goal.
Correct.
Any further comments by anyone?
No, I mean, it'll be the curriculum and the facilities, all those are part of that whole mission, vision. You guys will look at the five different areas and, and decide what you want to revise and talk about and that's-
And it is my understanding that we will bring that to a, a regular board meeting for annual approval at some point in the fairly near future?
Yeah, hopefully we'll have it done by that meeting, so, yeah.
Okay, all right. All right, brings us to 10B. Consider the employment agreement renewal for 2013 to 2015 data technicians. And that includes a little bit of reorganization, as my understanding. I don't know if anyone has any questions. Perhaps Maria could be available to answer them if there are-
Yeah, Maria and the backup is Nicole and Colleen. So if you want to ask some questions to Maria, I think that'd be the appropriate spot first. At least to talk about the structure. Maybe Maria, or next to you.
Were you organizing the department to have a level one and level two technician? The level two is a little bit more advanced technical support, allow the research and development in the buildings, I mean, through the program initiatives. And then the level one technician, it's pretty much what they are now, just the building wellness support for day-to-day work.
And with the additional technicians that were approved through the levy funding, we will be at a total of how many technicians, total?
Six.
Six. And that is not enough to cover every building, so I assume a couple of the level ones will be traveling between buildings, am I correct? On a, on whatever rotation schedule is appropriate. Will there be any technicians full-time in any of the buildings?
I think not at this stage, no.
Okay, so there'll be just an ongoing rotation? So, there'll be just an ongoing rotation.
They'll cover the buildings about two days, probably, with the rotation schedule.
All right. Further questions? All right, I believe this is an action item, so entertain a motion to approve the Employment Agreement Renewal for District Data Technicians.
Download.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any commentary, questions, discussion?
I have a question. Looks like the two-year package is nine point four, which is pretty much, is more of a clean, sorry, pretty much up to the teachers. And now, that's, again, that's beyond what we have budgeted of six percent. So, the rest comes out of our, where does that extra three point, three point four, comes out of our reserves?
No, I won't find the reserve, so it'll come out of the, we're thinking it's a budget for the next two years. That's three percent over two years.
Okay. But it is beyond our budget, though?
It's beyond what we budgeted.
Budgeted for?
Yes.
Then also, are we paying for dental on this? Is this something new?
They added dental as part of their package. Yep. Some of our employee groups are now adding that as part of their payroll settlement.
Do teachers have that?
They, we looked, they looked at it, but that was one item that, in their list of priorities, was low on the priority for this contract.
It appears we got additional workdays in negotiations contracts.
Yes, they're all full-time now. They were twenty-five days, they're all now two-hundred-and-sixty-day employees, so... The salaries fall within the allowance that we were, that we had put into the levy.
And maybe Nicole can ask, where does this fall with the pay equity report?
So, looking at it kind of big-picture-wise, what we had to do with year two is we had to look at what it was Merriam needed in order to be able to put her technology plan in place. And so, we, she, that's where she had the idea of having the two level-two technicians and then the four level-one technicians. So, the four level-one technicians are pretty much doing the same things that they're doing now. The two levels, the two new level-two technicians will be doing some additional duties that include some extended contracts that two of our current level-one technicians are taking on. The level-two technicians are going to be absorbing those extended contracts, which are about six thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars each, about twelve thousand dollars. So, that money will be absorbed into the two level-two technician positions. So, when we looked at their added responsibilities, we had to find out where they, in the kind of the sort of contest, and find out where they fall within our comfort points, and, 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 you know, put them in the middle to make sure that they weren't paid more than people with lower points. When we did that, we came up with the new salaries that are in the appendix of the data technician contract.
So, in your opinion, then, we're in compliance with the pay equity with this?
Absolutely, yes.
Chairman, just a clarification, you're increasing, so the nine point four percent includes the fact that all positions are increasing ten days of employment.
That's correct.
It's not carrying the contract from this year to next year, you're actually increasing the number of days that they'll be working. So, I think that nine point four has to be clarified, that we're asking for more days of employment. Ultimately, sixty-person days of additional service, if my, my English major math is accurate.
Which we need.
Any further discussion? I believe we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the Employee Agreement Renewal for 2013 to 2015 Data Technicians, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
No.
I believe we have a roll call. Deb Davis?
Aye.
Yvette Molitor?
Aye.
Richard Olson?
No.
I'll vote aye. Mr. Casper?
Aye.
Motion passes four to one. All right. Okay, then that brings us to our item ten C, Make-Up Days informational item here.
Yeah, just give you an update of what we've talked about. We had agreed on staff make-up days on April eighteenth, which is a Good Friday, and then June sixth, and staff would have a choice of attending either of those two days. And now, the games change a little bit, because now we've got two more snow days. So, to summarize, we have five snow days right now, and two of those days are in the contract where we don't make them up. So, we really have three make-up days right now, okay? So, of the three make-up days, we would go back now to the FEA and just talk a little bit about how we're going to figure out how to make those days up contractually, so we are within the contract. The pieces that you have to consider as a board are the make-up days for kids. The state has one hundred and sixty-five days as the minimum number of days for kids. Our contract, our, our kids go to school one hundred and seventy-two days. So, the kids have actually missed five days. So, they're down to one hundred and sixty-seven days. So, as we get closer and closer to that one hundred and sixty-five, if we go, if we have more days, then we're going to have to figure out actual days to make up, for sure. Without board input, we've got to do that, that's by statute. So, the question is, you want to, when do you want to start looking at making up days for students, for the current snow days that we have? Do you have some parameters you want to give the Cabinet to start taking a look at for making up student days, or do you want to hold off and wait till we hit the one sixty-five and then start considering those days at the end of the calendar year?
What, what kind of days are available to you now, and, I mean, what?
Yep, we have spring break. Yep, and April eighteenth, which is the Good Friday, and then June fourth is the last day of student day, so June fifth and sixth, and then graduation remembers that Sunday.
So, we're really limited.
Very limited, yep.
Mr. Chair, my preference would be to ask the administration to have discussion and bring forward a recommendation to us that they would consider when it comes to making up those snow days for students and staff. I don't think we should be getting into the issue of saying, use this day or that day, or this day or that day. I think that's a recommendation to spring forward. That would be my opinion.
I would agree.
It worked really well when we didn't have the other days before, we had it all resolved, and now these two new days hit last Thursday and Friday, so we're going to have to go back to the drawing board and have that discussion, so...
If I underst, I'm sorry. If I understood your commentary earlier, state statute requires one hundred and sixty-five student contact days.
Right, that's actually for the secondary, it's a little bit lower for the elementary, but we're using one sixty-five as our general.
If we are, we are now, according to the calendar that we have set up, we're at one sixty-seven?
Correct.
And this winter being what it is?
We have March and April.
Didn't it snow in May last year?
Did, yeah.
Okay. All right.
Question, years ago, we used to have this thing called bank time, which means that the day, the actual instructional day was longer than state required. So, you could factor into that somehow, so many hours extra that we were in session, really transferred into a day, so I'm assuming that's no longer an option.
Well, actually, we think it is an option, we're exploring that right now, and the CREC, we already have to make up some time, we don't have enough days left in the CREC and the ALC. So, we're actually looking at that very thing, so we're going to explore that,
so it's not our cake.
Yep, like, we could extend the day.
But all this has to be approved by the union?
Well, if you're beyond statute, you don't have to, we just want to get in agreement with the folks.
But you don't have a lot of time for agreement or discussion?
It's the way Mother Nature played it, so we've got to...
You almost have to, jury says extend the day, you almost have to start it now, or, you know, you can't, you can't be discussing.
Well, we'll, I think it's good to still have a conversation with, with the FEA, and Colleen did a lot, a great job the last time when she had that discussion, and we'll get, we'll get together as soon as possible. I'm sure Tim's right there, he'll, he'll be in agreement that we'll get together.
Well, then, I would just support Mr. Robichaud's statement earlier, is that ask that the administration prepare a report and recommendations to us as soon as feasible.
So, we really can't extend it beyond the graduation, because summer school starts.
Well, that's it, summer school starts, yeah, the following Monday, you're right, yeah, it starts the following Monday. So, you can go Saturdays and Sundays and spring breaks and things like that, so we'll try to figure something out and bring back a recommendation. It's just so tight right now, it's really...
And maybe the state will issue a forgiveness.
Yeah. The thing that we always consider, too, is that it's really, and we like to extend days at the end of the summer, if we could, put them all back for kids, but it's really hard for kids to come back at the end of this, end of the school year, too. So, I mean, that all plays into our consideration when we want to put those days back for kids. Yeah, there's not many days left.
Well, I was here when we extended the school day in order to, during a construction project of the high school and Roosevelt and so on, so I think that might have some possibilities, I don't know.
Yeah, we'll take a look at it.
Do we have early releases, how many early releases, can we eliminate those?
The early releases doesn't help us with, actually, the contact days are, they're counted the same regardless if they're early releases or not, so that's not going to help us either.
Well...
But I would, aren't, isn't our curriculum planning and workshops scheduled at this point for that time?
Yep.
What's more important, student-teacher contact time or curriculum development?
Curriculum development's very important, there's mandated training, I'm sure that staff have to be involved with, that are scheduled and can't be given up. It'd be my guess, I'm guessing.
Are we going to rebate, if we can't get all the days in?
Pardon me?
Where we can get money back, if we can?
Well, if it goes below the one sixty-five, I think that that would be something we have to consider. But any other days beyond that, we get paid for membership, we don't get paid for hours or days in, so even if we have a half-day of kids, we still get the membership of the kids that attend our school, that's how the funding comes, yeah. The only time we possibly could lose, and I don't know if they would, I don't know what the decision would be if they go under one hundred and sixty-five days. I don't think there's a penalty. We'd, I'll, I'll look it up and see, just to make sure, but I don't think there is anything in there. No, it used to be statute before, a couple years ago, there were no minimum days in Minnesota, and now they put the one sixty-five.
All right. Further questions? Hearing none, we'll move on. Item eleven, Other Items of Information. I do not believe we have a student representative this evening.
I'm actively recruiting a couple students, so I have one that's very interested, so I'm hoping we get one that's going to be pretty consistent, so...
Okay. School Board Members, any information you would like to share?
Anybody going to that Thursday?
Yep, I am, I think.
Is Jerry, too? Jerry, is anybody else going? No?
I guess three.
I would like to share one piece of information and recognize the passing of a longtime district employee. Mr. David Thayer, who I was privileged to work with for a number of years at, at Faribault Middle School, he served as a teacher and as a, as a dean and a counselor, I think, many, or several of the hats, and a coach, and he wore a number of hats, and he was a, an outstanding individual and made great contributions to our district, and he passed away a week ago today, I believe. And so, I'd like to recognize his contribution and share my personal gratitude for, to his family, for his service to our district.
Thank you, Mr. Casper, for bringing that up. I echo exactly what you just said.
Any other board member comments this evening? All right, that brings us to Superintendent.
Yeah, a couple items, since the board work session, I had a chance to attend the GED graduation, you may have seen that in the paper. It's a terrific program, and Jessica Lewis ran it this year, did a great job. Parents were there, and the kids, kids, a lot of our adults that have graduated getting their GED. So, I believe we had about fifty students actually graduate from our GED program through our Community Education. Jason, thank you, Emery, for that. Is that our Professional Development Schools Meeting in Mankato, and we are discussing two fellows, teachers, coming for us next year, and what that means is that we can free up some time with a couple of other teachers to possibly be interventionist, similar to what we're doing now, or maybe even doing some integration thing with the technology. So, that's exciting, to still work with those eight school districts through Mankato State University. I was just at today, a partnership with Dodge Center, actually, it's Triton School District, where it's kind of like our, well, it's an after-school parent education program for our Latino parents, and it teaches them how to navigate the school system, the resources that we have for the school system. We had about fifteen participants last year for it, and it's, we were able to do that as a result of a grant written by the University of Minnesota Extension Office, and we're, we're going to continue to do that for the next four years, and we're going to track things like closing the achievement gap for these kids, growth, and also graduation rates for these kids. And then finally, I was, Emery was able to set up a meeting with the University of Minnesota to talk a little bit about STEAM, and we'll talk probably a little bit more about that at our retreat, where we talk about our curriculum and goals like that, but it was a nice informational meeting that we had teachers there and other staff, and two representatives from the University of Minnesota that know a lot about the STEAM. It's the same thing as STEM with the, the arts. So, that's all I have.
Thank you very much. All right. Section twelve is Reminder of Dates to Remember. A week from this evening, March third at 3:30 PM, our Curriculum Committee Meeting at the District Office. A week from this evening at 5:30 PM, the School Board Retreat, also at the District Office. March tenth, two weeks from tonight, 7:30 AM, a Finance Committee Meeting at the District Office. Also on March tenth, 5:30 PM, is a Board Work Session at the District Office. I believe it's a Tuesday, March eleventh, 4:00 PM, the Community Education Advisory Meeting at the District Office. Also, at Tuesday, March eleventh, the 4:30, the Policy Meeting at the District Office. And it is a Monday, am I... March twenty-fourth, 6:30 PM, the regular board meeting, and that one is scheduled for the City Hall Council Chambers.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question? Got two meetings in the same night at the same place, might be some membership overlap. March eleventh, Community Ed Advisory Committee and the Policy Committee?
Oh.
At the same, basically almost the same time.
Four and 4:30.
Yep, we can change the policy, if you like, to a different night, if there is a chance to do that.
I think, and probably have a lot of people coming to that.
I would, I would really appreciate that. We actually are scheduled to meet at South Central College for the Community Ed Advisory Council. I think, if you had information , Kathy, sorry about that.
So, it'd be easier to move the policy?
It would. Dr. Harper's going to give people a tour and a talk.
Yep, so, can we send a email to reschedule the Policy Committee?
Thank you for that consideration.
And did I mishear? The Community Ed Advisory Meeting will be at the District Office?
South Central.
Or at South Central? At South Central, okay.
The R Ed.
All right, so please send out an email regarding the rescheduling of the Policy Meeting. meeting. It's currently scheduled for March eleventh.
Thank you.
All right, no problem. All right, well, that brings us to the end of that agenda. I believe we're going into closed session, so I'm going to ask advice on the step-by-step procedure of doing that. I know, I've sat through it several times, but talking through it is a whole nother thing.
Entertain a motion to recess into closed session.
All right, we'll entertain a motion to recess into closed session.
So long.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Say what the closed session is for.
Oh, the closed session is for purposes of the superintendent, a discussion of the superintendent evaluation.
Thanks.
All right, well, we had a motion and a second. All those in favor of adjourning to closed session, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say same sign.